Okay, good evening. I'm going to call the order of meeting number eighteen fifty-seven of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are here in the John Day meeting room of the town hall as well as on the Zoom platform. We have a call, we have a full board plus our alternate. Do we have any added agendas?
No.
No. Was no legal notice? We are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda?
Can I ask a question? The solar section that's already open for public in that section or is that? Say something like public?
The item on the agenda is coming under. Other business.
It said new business, solar.
I know. Yeah, it's not an application.
Right. Would I be able to talk at that time or should I talk right now?
Um, why don't you do it now under the public participation?
Okay. So my name is Keith Agaloff. I live at one twenty-five Depot Street. Want to tell you first, I am a believer in solar. I believe solar energy and solar panels are viable alternative energy source. I have solar on my property. Now that really does great for me and for my family. And I think it's necessary to have solar in our country and in solar interstate. So I believe in that. I'm also part of the solar group in town. We've been meeting for about four, maybe five months now. I'm part of, I've submitted petition for a public hearing for the Fall Road Solar and so part of the the group that's developing concepts in town about solar energy. I don't want to talk, I don't want to talk about solar really. So I want to talk about the term agrivoltaeus for a minute. Because you know, the the term solar farm was out there, it's still being used. And I hate that term because it takes two awesome words. It takes the word solar and it takes the word farm, which are totally awesome words, and it combines them into what amounts to be, at least in East Windsor, hundreds of thousands of solar panels, packed tight on what's been approved to almost be a thousand acres of land. There's nothing, there's nothing solar about it other than the sun hitting those panels. There's no farming involved. Destroying the the plants that, I mean, the the organisms that live in the soil, you're destroying the organism that live above the soil. You're taking away habitat. So just the concept of solar farms is so antithetical to what I believe in, in terms of what we should be doing to protect our ecosystem and protect our rural character of our town and protect our farms and protect our woods, you know, so and and I and I want to talk about gravity and solar, but you just have to look at that project. It's a problem. Agrivoltaeus, this is like public relations companies coming up with words, all right? If they didn't come up with solar farms, they came up with agrivoltaeus, two great words. I love them agriculture and voltaeus. I love electricity. I love the, you know, fixing things and all that good stuff about electricity. So let's combine them into new words. That's gonna be, it's gonna deal with the problem of communities being against industrial solar on their farms and in your in your rural communities and amongst their homes. So they came up with a new term. And I did a lot of research in agrivoltaeus already, and that's like great for the Midwest, great for the areas of the country that have hot climates. They're actually going to elevate the solar farms, solar panels above the land and they're going to grow crops on the land and animals can go under the, under there for cooling and you're going to combine agriculture and solar. That's tremendous, right? Okay, that's enormously expensive. It's not happening in East Windsor. It's not going to happen in East Windsor probably in about twenty years. You have to build platforms to put the solar things up above the the sky so that you can put animals and plants and everything underneath it. Tobacco's not going to grow under it. Corn's not going to grow under it. You have to have specific plants that are really great for low light conditions, all right? Agrivoltaeus. I'm going to give you a little thing I put together, but basically, you know, we have to watch out for exploitation. On East and Middle Road, they put some sheep on there. I don't even know if they're still over there, you know, to graze, to to kill the grass and the plants, right? That's not agrivoltaeus. That's not agriculture. Putting sheep out there for six hours a day for a couple of times a week is not how you do combine agriculture and solar farms, all right? They're using the sheep to destroy the grass so they don't have to pay for mowing under there. And the sheep, as everyone knows, they're going to tear up the roofs and there's not going to be anything on the ground after about two years. And you know, I I used to be biochemist. I love biology. I grew up loving life, you know, natural organisms and everything. It destroyed everything in the ground. You might as well put that on that glycol phosphate on the ground and destroy all the plant. You might as well put herbic, or you know, chemicals down the ground to kill everything because it's going to kill everything in the ground. All I'm saying is we need to be careful about this term and this concept that you're trying to sell us, which is, which is to make, I'm out of time?
I want to just add one question.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
Um. The item on the agenda is DEP, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Right.
Department of Agriculture document.
Yeah, I copied for you some of their key comments here, right?
I was wondering if you were going to comment to them.
Yeah, so they they say straight out.
No one's.
Yeah, they they say straight out placing solar and agricultural land, especially farmland classified as having prime statewide or locally important farmland soils should be avoided. Should not be put on prime farmland. Okay, they talk about the possibilities of putting it on farmland if the farm is, if the if the land has been or degraded values, gravel, extraction or development, you know, those types of areas. They do not support putting solar farms on 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 farmland. They're promoting agrivoltaeus. That's the problem I have with DEP. It's almost like DEP and and some people in the legislature that want to bring farming to East Windsor, I mean, solar to East Windsor, have come up with a new concept to try to sell people with the belief that agrivoltaeus is a good way to go to make this appropriate for your community. Don't forget the word agriculture is in there. And DEP is rolling out guidelines for this. And I have some guidelines I'm going to give you. Oh, by the way, your comments, your your comments that you folks put together were like thumbs up tremendous, really appreciated because you took a stand on 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 preserving farmland and and protecting our rural character. I'm worried that DEP is going to come up with these regulations without input from stakeholders, which includes you, which includes me, where we have to be attuned to the fact that agrivoltaeus is not suitable for East Windsor at this time, because they're not going to put the money into it. And um, we need to be cautious that they're not trying to sell the public that this is the next great thing after solar farms. I'm just coming here to raise a flag. Let's be careful about what they're selling us because I think this is a public relations thing that's come out in order to um, deal with communities that are anti-solar, okay? And I'm just going to hand this to you. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on a matter that's not on? Is there anyone online that has liked to speak on a matter that's not on tonight's agenda? Right now, we move on to pool of minutes. We have the minutes from our July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, operation suggestions? No, sir. Here we now, I'm going to take a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting eighteen fifty-five held Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
There's a motion on the table for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Dave. Any further discussion? Here we now, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You can have this. We'll receive applications. We received one application. It's PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. It's a site plan review for construction of a self-storage facility, fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet and ten buildings to be constructed in five phases. Located on map twenty-two, block twenty-three, lot zero zero one dash zero one in the M one zone. The applicant is James Stanton. This will be, his application will be heard at a future meeting. We have nothing under performance bonds, actions, and extensions of road acceptance. We have no continued public hearing. We have no new public hearing. So old business. You have PZ twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, text amendment, proposed text amendment changed zoning regulations, section five oh two, permitted accessory use. Use table B one, B two, M one, H I Z, and T Z five zone. The applicant is Cardinal Realty LLC, Frank Tierdout. So this, at our last meeting, we discussed some of the texts that needed to be modified or corrected. So in our packets, we have highlighted in red the comments and the additions and changes that we wanted to see. So the first two pages are the red lines and then the second two pages are the pink color. Does anybody see anything that is missing or did you have anything that was added or corrected?
I just have a question. We received an application today for another storage facility. Would, if we were to approve this amendment to the regs, would an application that came in today before we act it on the reg change be subject to the change trends or to the existing regs?
I would say it doesn't really matter in this case because it's an M one zone and they're allowed them permitted use in the M one zone.
The question I'm asking is, I will say, the aesthetics are obvious.
Well, it would be.
Oh, it says not located in an M one zone, so it wouldn't apply. Okay.
Yep.
So this is more of a clarification of something that's currently not in the form of data, so this is to define the new, a new use.
Yep.
And I have a very insignificant kind of administrative correction. We have note fifteen that we talked about. It really will be sixteen. We discovered, we have a note that's not actually been printed in our regs that we need to get on. So there's a note sixteen in the text where we say that you use from the B one and there's note fifteen.
Just above all blue.
Yep.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and then I actually used it in the draft motion for consideration, so. They could either not have a number in it or it would be sixteen.
They might copy this off the sixteen. Any other comments or suggestions? If anything, if any kind of fits with what we discussed at the last meetings. Right, so if there's nobody else, then I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, a petition to amend the East Windsor zoning regulations to include amendment to section two or three definitions to provide a definition for self-service storage facility. Number two, an amendment to section five oh two, the table of uses permitted in business and industrial districts to add a self-service storage facility use category to the other uses, including a new note sixteen. And three, the addition of a new section five oh two point one to add a new self-service storage facility section to the zoning regulations as detailed in the final draft of the text amendment dated seven twenty-seven twenty-three. But with note, where it says note fifteen in two places, it should say note sixteen. Finding that limiting the location of self-service services storage facilities to the industrial M one zone and with restrictions as an adaptive reuse of underutilized office buildings in the business zones is in keeping with the East Windsor planning conservation development.
There's a motion on the table for pool. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Here we now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You can have this. Correction to our agenda. This is not new business, it's other business. We're going to discuss the solar public comments.
Everyone has.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Anne forwarded or Mike forwarded the guidance document and forwarded some presentation material for the state, the state had a public informational meeting where it was accepting comments on a couple of different things. And one was the SCAM program, that's a shared clean energy fund. And when they go out to procurement of renewable energy, and one of the questions they had on on their presentation was, should they give some sort of preference to proposals that were coming in with this agrivoltaeus? So they're comparing bids across the board. Should they put their thumb on the scale because someone's using agrivoltaeus? So to me, that's counterintuitive. If the intention is to avoid using farmland and you assuming you've gone through, I've looked at all the sites available to me and the only one I can go with is farmland. I'm going to, I'm going to mitigate that. Is that deserving of? You know, let's take thirty percent off the tongue, get it, make it stack up better. So that's my first takeaway from that one. The I don't have a lot of tough comments on the guidance document itself, other than I think there should be some water quality assessment free and post. And one of the other things is somewhere you have to weigh the cumulative impact to a given community. And if you're saying in or out and should I, shouldn't I? What is that up against? Just like any other kind of environmental, right, where you would be looking for the overall impact.
Part that I really, you know, have a hard time with is how they can you know, the citing council can approve these things without any really sustained consideration of existing zone. And I mean, this isn't industrial activity. It's no matter what you call it, it's a for-profit, big business, industrial activity. And they're putting industrial activities into residential and farm areas, agricultural areas. And our normal zoning wouldn't allow industrial activity like that. So how can they just arbitrarily say your local zoning doesn't matter? We get to decide what we stick in where we want.
There is language in there for consideration of local zoning and I had a note that we could, we could impact this. It's a one point three point five on page five of ten, local zoning considerations.
Consideration.
Consideration, right? And so I think we could impact. We had strong language in our own regulations of what our intentions are. If it's under one megawatt, we should be reviewing it anyway from the way I'm reading all this. And right now, we're very favorable to renewable energy. And maybe we need, much like we did with the self-storage, maybe we need to have some criteria in our own regs for solar array.
Well, another thing is the noise. Well, I sat here personally to ask that question. Do you think it makes any noise? No, and you you look on Facebook and some other video, I'm sure a lot of people saw it, and it was a summit. If I looked at it, I wouldn't be happy either. But that, in a way, I mean, I'm sure during the day it's probably tolerable, but in the middle of the night, we're trying to sleep. It's the only noise that that array is going to make is when the generator starts, if they lose power, they'll have some, you know, the back of generator start. You see the videos online, it's just constant.
Answers. So, yeah, so like their initial meetings with the town, if that comes up, they're going to move them as far like to the back of their, so the noise is, is.
Until they're, they're. I mean, everything's quiet.
There's no consideration for setbacks or anything, like I say, if anybody came to us with an industrial activity in that type of an area, I mean, minimum, we'd be having some major setbacks and some much better screening and noise abatement and everything else that goes with it.
Something for Dan's point of how much should any town be burdened is very valid because if we want to see residential development in this town, all the big parcels are going to be taken up by solar and you can't convince me it's ever going away.
Or does it devalue the abiding property too?
We have achieved that. Yeah, Jason, Jason sent a letter to finding counsel saying that we're out, we're done.
Yeah, we have.
Until we change our regulations.
Well, the state has jurisdiction. They have jurisdiction. So the task the town is taking is to get intravener status and Jason will be testifying at the administrative hearing portion of, you know, the most recent petition. And his hearing with the residents are concerned about helping.
I don't wonder if they have that.
Even even if we act with modifying our zoning rigs, that only applies for under one.
Where, well, the way I look at it is where it applies, if it's under a megawatt and it comes in, so it's going to have some criteria that we set out for it to meet. But then the other ones that are looking and they have to consider, you know, what do they have on on the books for their zoning rights? So then when they're defining, they'd be looking at, you know, what are the criteria? And what's nice is the preliminary meetings that they have to have with the town. At least there's something, you know.
Already there.
Right.
Meeting and then making go forward however you want. I consider it no offense.
Yeah, it didn't fit our plans.
Right. The greater good of power generation with no emissions is what the state's interested in.
So. And I think that was.
Once they build it.
Because. One megawatt is not enough for a commercial to make it financially.
I think that's where they.
Yeah, so one megawatt is usually consumer based. You're going to be, you're going to be generating roof of your own building kind of thing. But for a commercial venture, that's not nearly enough to make it viable.
But once the state has invested this much money in this source of energy, at the end of twenty years, if the panels are no good, they're just going to replace that.
Of course.
Yeah. They're never going away. Say it's going to turn back into farmland, I don't buy.
Well, that's just more towards the.
Unless you write it in that you only have a twenty-year lease and that's it, then it's the whole thing.
Well, yeah.
That helps the next generation.
Already been cited is a powerful thing.
Yep.
Right.
Sure. I mean, you have suggestions of how we can add language to our.
That's one thing. The other thing is providing comments to the state on this guidance document. And so.
And I think the guidance document would look at the total burden to a town and the amount of development that is precluded in the future and the amount of prime farmland lost. And let somebody else share in the solar inciting.
So I want to grab something for signature of the commission to submit as comments.
You know, I just had a thought. I know the town's been long opposed to a noise ordinance. But if we drafted something about continuous noise.
You can't do anything that is different from the state noise.
More restricted, can't be less restricted. Yes.
You should.
Yes. If you need more restricted, you just can't be less restricted in the state.
So if you were to Google East Windsor noise ordinance, I'll find the one that did the tests. I don't think it made it to town, from what I hear.
If we were to approach it from a continuous level, not not peaks or, you know, bangs, momentary or because now we're creating a background noise that is continuous, that never goes away.
The only thing I can add to that, Mike, is this the noise might not fail if you're measuring at the property, if you're measuring from the distance and extrapolating the distance of those. But what, that's not to say it's not a nuisance to someone, right?
Right? Well, I mean, if you set a new level at fifty decibels at the property line for continuous twenty-four hour generation. You do.
I don't think that that would mean that someone could take an action against the state for ninety-one being near their house.
Not continuously. It has peaks and valleys. This has a continuous.
And I, and I also think when we were dealing with gravel pit and talking about this, this, some of the nuances of the parcels that were included with that and some environmental issues and some and then the closing of the pit and the bonds and all the planning and zoning stuff and the guidance from Melanie was as soon as the state is, the siding council issues their approval, you can't, you can't see the site. You have no authority over it. You can't control its actions. You just have, it's.
They're an embassy.
Yeah.
Amen.
Because it's a public utility, so they have oversight because it's dealing with something larger. In that case, it was helpful because there were problems we couldn't work our way through. But I.
What kind of zoning things could we impose? If they don't end up by our setbacks or.
East three, like if we're, if we were going to put in somewhere, whether it's an ordinance or in our zoning rights, what we want, right? Whether it's the type of screening, right? Not a chain link fence with a black harp and evergreen, you know, like an arborist in front of it, but something else.
Some good.
Distance move, right?
Like outside highways.
A buffer between the first row. That, so. It it puts it in writing.
What about the total cumulative amount of farmland that can be consumed?
Yeah, I mean, that kind of sounds like.
You can't tell people what they can do with their name.
Yeah.
There shouldn't be any noise emissions from that period, in my opinion. That's just wrong. You can't have that going all night long. That just, that just drives people crazy. You're going to hear that all, all night long.
Solar is doing the same thing.
But you don't.
You don't hear it.
Further okay, because all the, it's a cooling fans. It's a cooling fan that the owners. Yeah. Okay.
Simple solution. Make it so the farmer makes enough money where he could sell, sell his property.
It's not the farmers and that generation down.
They don't want to farm.
They don't want to farm. They're in Stuyor Way, next generation comes, I know, one point two million for a farm, they get it.
Oh, I know, right up there at Job Ox, you got one point five million for, you know, for fifty acres.
Yeah.
There was another one point two, five million for the orchard more right up above. So why not sell?
Well, make it where we develop it faster. If we develop it, it's developed already. Well, then you put houses on there, people complain about the houses too.
If we.
Probably in reality, we can't do anything about it.
I hate to say that.
I mean, the solution is the same as developing.
Town can't beat the price.
You don't like it, you can own it, you can own it. Down could go out and there's been several towns that have gone out. On in on a big townwide bond and purchased open space. Dump a bunch of money into a bond package and you go out and. Give it back to the farmers, just like a P D R.
Next. Item of discussion is chicken regulations.
Okay, so. Looking to. Change our chicken regulations or or alter our chicken regulations, so. This is chicken only first, to be very clear, no other poultry. People have asked about turkeys, pheasants. It's chickens only, so and it's chickens for non-commercial farms. Um, I happen to be thinking about this because I get so many phone calls away from people. And at the same time, the agricultural commission thought of the same thing and brought it to me. That especially with the price of eggs right now. Um, the way our regulations are written, you can't, if you have less than a parcel of land. You basically, you can't have two chickens, if you just wanna have two chickens. Then try a couple eggs for your family, maybe give them to your friends. You just can't do it here with the way that our rights our rights are. So I took a look, um, and I won't read this word for word. But we looked at regulations of surrounding towns, um, including, but not limited to Enfield, Ellington, Windsor Lock, South Windsor. Um, as a template for what our regulations should represent. And Albert Grant, who's our commissioner for the agricultural commission, he's endorsed what we've kinda worked on. This has kind of been an all summer thing. Um, our current livestock regulations. Three oh five three D, which includes domestic chickens, state that animal shelters and manure storage must be. Hundred and fifty feet from any abutting dwelling unit, water course or wetland. One hundred feet from any side or rear property line, sixty feet from any front property line and seventy-five feet from any well. Now, these regulations include pigs, goats, horses, cows. I mean, this is all encompassing. And we thought maybe that was a little too much if you wanna have two chickens and you happen to have a half an acre. So. They're not really. Sorry. Um, seventy-five feet. From an existing well is a health department regulation. That's not negotiable. That's something we cannot change. So these. The changes that we make in these regulations will not. Fit every single parcel in East Windsor. If you live on a half an acre and you have a well and you can't make that seventy-five foot. For health department, you just, you can't have even two chickens. That's period. But for people who do have half an acre and they have town water. And they wanna have three chickens, we're trying to change things, so neighborhoods like Prospect Hill, um. And over on Witten Road, Tronley Road even, Dean Avenue. This would allow for them to keep domestic chickens. And I don't know, is there a copy of the proposed changes yet?
And then I think it's in your packet.
In my packet, oh, I didn't know if y'all had it in front of you. Uh, so we were changing. Some of the regulations, and again, this is chickens only, so we would be writing a a new section to just stick in there. And it's for non-commercial farms only. We're looking at saying. In our one, two, three, A one, A two zones, which are residential and agricultural. You can have five pens, five pens per a half an acre of. Usable pasture, which is defined, um, I forget the exact definition, but it's already in our regulations.
So that's open space and that's totally block size.
Exactly, and that's something whenever I get these phone calls, I also walk through with people if you have what, if you have pavement, if you have none of this, we have to subtract all this. But it's only usable pasture. Greater than two acres, you cannot have more than twenty hens, with the exception of commercial farms, but that falls under the regulations of three oh five, three C and D already. Residential uses that are in a B one, B two, T Z five zone are subject to administrative review, so. You just happen to live along Route five and have half an acre, but you're residential, you wanna have two chickens, we would take that into consideration. I'm not sure. I would think that it's administrative. I'm not sure if that would be something you all would wanna look at, but. That's what, that's what we're having on these regulations right now. So they have to have a structure or an enclosure. Um, it cannot be greater than two hundred square feet, which is our. Oh, that's our minimum for a shed permitting.
Are you saying structure and enclosure or is it structure or? You just have a chain out of a pen. Of chicken wire, is that?
I have to look at the health department, but I think you have to have a a and. I think, I think, I think so, but I will check on that.
I have more questions while you're at it. Are you talking roosters or does?
So you're thinking about that, that is already in the other part of the regulations that say no roosters, um, less than three. Pasturable acres, that's staying, and we reiterated it in this whole.
That's the biggest problem.
Yeah, no, I. Okay, I'm just sorry, thank you. Um, twenty-five feet from any street line. The structure cannot be higher than ten feet. Uh, it's located at least ten feet from any lot line. Obviously seventy-five feet from a well for health department, twenty-five feet minimum from abutting dwellings. To go more than that was kind of limiting these smaller neighborhoods again. And then a hundred and fifty feet from any wetland or water course, I believe that's a. I have to check those actual wetlands, but. Has to be contained by other fence or landscaping of at least four feet in height. I know that chickens comply and they can get out, that was something that was brought up, but we're just trying to make it some. It's some. Some sort of enclosure. Uh, all buildings shall be constructed through products, peptides to prevent events of offensive odors. Presence of pests and predators and owners are responsible for restraining. Any and all hens to their own property, which. I don't see many roaming in the town of East Windsor now. I don't know if this would change, but we're not advocating for free range. If you get two chickens, they go wherever you want. We're trying to keep it as they are now with that. Um, we would like to see. Plot plan in the planning office. I don't know if this would be maybe a permit through permanently or maybe not, maybe it would just be something they walk in and reapprove. No hens may be kept inside the principal residential structure, which seemed to be. A regulation all of their towns have. I guess that's a thing. Again, we reiterated no male poultry, cash rated or not, shall be kept on any property with less than three acres of usable. pasture, and we added no predator alarms are permitted, which a whole bunch of other places have that we didn't have, but that was a good idea. So we're looking to send these to Crog, wanted to see if you had opinions or. Yes.
I have. Yes, yes, yes. Cause I have chickens all around. If somebody were to have chickens. Twenty-five feet. From my house, I would have an issue. I just would. That's very close. Your screening is chicken wire, so you have to look at them. You have to look at. The mess.
Yeah.
Uh, I get that there are small lots. But I would expect. Churrories or something to hide it. Or a solid fence, not chicken wire.
So a solid fence or screening?
It's just two books and the reality is when you buy. A lot of my neighbors do this. They buy the chickens at Tractor Supply, they're sixty-nine cents. They don't know when their babies, if they're male or female. So they get roosters. And, um, they grow and they squawk. And so they.
If they're sexually, they are. They're, if you buy them, they call sex slave, you know their heads.
Oh, well, at Tractor Supply, we seem not to know.
You're gonna buy it, but you know you can't have. Roosters, then you don't buy a tractor supply. And secondly, the twenty-five foot, what happens if you hate the dogs? Somebody had a dog, they said, well, they have to put all kinds of bushes so you couldn't see it.
I just think the chicken coops are incredibly unsightly and so the. Pop it right, and if it was me, I put it as far away from my house as I could and put it right at the property line.
See, I think we forgot, we we have forgotten that, we first talked about this four or five years ago. We were considering our roosters. But the real problem was a lot of four age people. As part of their projects, wanna have chickens, you know, as part of their project. Now it's for eggs. But the price eggs, you know, that shall pass also. Walmart's two fifty a dozen.
They were one seventy-seven this week.
One of the problems, one of the real problems. And I've raised chickens. One of the real problems is predators. The raccoons love chickens. Okay, so what happens? If you have fencing and you don't have to put fencing on top, the raccoons can't get at your chickens. But they get at your neighbor's garbage, they get at your neighbor's everything. That's the real problem on this.
Would you, Mr. Gowney, want to see predator alarms allowed or are you just saying?
Excuse me?
Are you, are you saying you think predator alarms would would be?
No, I'm I'm just saying that whoever has chickens, you know, has to realize that they're they're kinda putting a. A problem on neighbors. I mean, potentially they could. But no, as written, I think it, I think it's fine. I really do. But I think we're losing sight of the fact that's. Not so much we're doing this, not so much for eggs, pricing the fight out, the, we're doing it. Youngsters and the four age and. That's a, I wanna become. Active in the in the community. So they can have two or three chickens. And perhaps if we have the. Should I say the building inspector? Well, and look at. Well, and look at the coop because four foot of of fencing is not gonna work. You have to bury it six inches in the ground, because if you don't, what will happen is they'll dig up on the rip.
Okay, I mean, I've seen.
So we can look at that, maybe have some talk to the building official, if that's something we can have have as part. Once they put a plot plan in, if they do a permit, if we make them do an official permit link permit and then. They will go through all the same steps where you have the inspection of zoning.
How will you know how many?
How many they're allowed?
Or well, actual in practice.
I mean, it's like what we have now. I can't go. Um, yeah, so we were just. If somebody complains, then we did check, it would be the same way that we do.
I'd like to have chickens in my backyard, cause they they pick up all the grubs, so I would have to put down any brush. I'd love that, you know, bring them up.
But thi- this has the language for no free ranging of them though, so you can't have them free ranging in your yard to pick up all the stuff, which would be an advantage, I hear. But this has language that says contained by their fence or landscaping. So there is no free ranging of chickens to your yard, correct? Is there?
My entire yard expense.
Your entire yard.
Yes, so.
The other thing, now if you have chickens, they go up to the fence, you know, the neighbor's got a dog, it's gonna drive crazy.
Um, yeah, well, we can make. Well, you have an old free reading?
I I think it's well written. Perhaps I would like to have somebody from the. From the town hall.
The building.
Cause he had the building. Constructed so they will contain the chickens and keep out the predators.
Now, can they sell the eggs in the residential zones?
You have to have, right now, as our regulations for commercial or non-commercial farms are, you have to have a permit and have a farm stand, which we would. It's selling eggs. Now, you drive around, you see random signs of free eggs. I don't think with two or three chickens, you're gonna get enough to make.
Any money, but.
Yeah, I.
So when the law just had something about chickens in the paper, they shot it down. I'm I'm really following, I'm sure you probably.
Yeah, we got that in the article. A lot of people were very excited about it though from.
So what happened over there?
I don't know if they. I actually put in a call to.
I read that, I read the article. Their current regulations are are pretty far, that, you know, like, it's a hundred twenty-five.
Yeah.
Something like that. They're quartering a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So nobody could qualify for the hundred twenty-five foot setback, so they were trying to, they were trying to reduce it to fifteen. And I think maybe they got too aggressive.
But we, I mean, I think.
Well, I'm a favorer of chickens. I don't care. I I like, I don't. I don't, I don't mind looking at them. I don't mind. It's East Windsor.
I don't know how many of you guys sat through when we became a right to farm town. Uh, Joe Nichols from the Farm Bureau came and spoke to us and, you know. This room was packed every single night, since everybody wanted to be a right to farm town, and so I think that, you know, to your point, the. The increasing, uh, the backyard chicken capability, probably something people want. I wouldn't mess around with the right to farm regulations because they were very. By professionals and. Was a hundred percent supportive of it, so.
You talk about buying chicks from Tractor Supply. Far as I know, step rate, meaning you have to buy a minimum of. Six chicks. So if you're only allowed with two or five with it.
No, it's.
Under half acre lot. They have to go and buy a hen. A polish, but you know what's people. Which is nice, cause you don't want to buy or I've done that, I've, you know, come home with.
My neighbors, there's a lot of roosters. And they take care of it in time, but they let them grow for a while and.
You don't know until they're. Until they're out of.
I was actually just informed, there's someone on East Road with a sign, free roosters. Come on, check that out tomorrow. Um, yeah, make sure they're my own. Yeah, I mean, we can, I I I can look at rewriting. Some of this, try to talk to Ken, our building official, see if we can implement something like. Inspect such a rules.
I can't imagine that the building official's gonna wanna issue building. How do you actually maintain Frank saying? Very fencing and. You know, so maybe it's something that.
I wouldn't mind learning if it was something that I would.
I mean, I I think it'd just be real beneficial if we had some type of a. Printed instructions or recommendations of somebody, if somebody comes and say, hey, I'd like to get some chicken. Still, I'm kinda thinking about that solid screening, as I say, you know, you don't know what your neighbor has for for pets and. All of a sudden chickens come next door and oh, my dog wouldn't sleep, he'd be.
Yeah, I can take, I have the agricultural commission this week, so I'll take it back to them and talk and see if we can.
It's not then the water.
Make some adjustments and then bring it back to talk to you about it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next item we have is the working draft of the Warehouse Point District Regimage.
So. It's been a while since you've seen these and. Uh, because of basically other things around your agenda, so it's, it was, um. Late in twenty twenty-two when we had any type of real fruitful discussion about it. But. Um, based upon that. Discussion and, um. Kind of the comments that we had, the draft that's in front of you. Uh, has a few revisions to kinda speak to some of those. Um, the the biggest sort of change from where we started was that. was that we're no longer proposing three new zones, we're we're bound to. Um, there's a sort of a working proposed draft map, which is a smaller sheet of paper. Colors are, might be a little bit, oh yes, sort of cut the bottom, but you'll see, so the green that's proposed, that darker green is the proposed core area. And then there's an orangey kind of reddish piece, which is the um transition. Everything else that's there is the existing underlying zoning as it stands today, which is not proposed to be changed. Um, so when we started looking at it and and mapping everything out, looking at existing buildings and proposed allowable uses. There's really not a lot of properties to try to make any type of meaningful uh, difference between one transitional zone and a, we know what the core is, right? That's where it makes more sense to allow um those specific types of uses and more intensely developed properties, which is right centered on that main, you're starting to come down from the highway. But as you move away and you start looking at the viable uses of these properties, they're all mostly similar in size and and not going to be a lot of difference, so creating another layer of complication by adding another zone. To us, didn't really seem like it made much sense. Um, so with that, the that third zone periphery comes out. Um, and there were some other comments from the previous discussions. Um, which I think the first change that you'll see, and I and I have some of the comments which I kept in there. Um, the um, the build two line which is shown as fifteen, established or fifteen, so again, if it's, if there's an established built to line based upon looking at the the properties within two hundred and fifty feet, we want a new building to match that. And that's so that all the buildings are developed along that same plane. You don't want to have fifteen properties built at a ten foot setback and then require the new building to be at a thirty five foot setback, because now the site's in the way they function or sort of, so if there's an established line, that's what they'll hold, and if not, in the core, it's fifteen, and that's to bring the buildings closer to the street. You're trying to engage pedestrian activity and and have um, people that are not in their car interact with businesses, you don't want them to be sixty feet off the road. Um, so that's where that change went from, the transition is held at at thirty five, again, unless there's an established standard. Um. The next page, um, we had some comments, uh, actually, uh, J R Russo had provided feedback uh, when this came before you, not sure which iteration, and sent us some comments, and and one of their comments was that frequently, properties in East Wing don't have soils which are supportive of um sort of stormwater treatment and um, sort of your traditional low impact development techniques, which might make it difficult. Um, so my sort of sense with that is, we we don't want to just pull it out. We've heard a lot about how stormwater and the blue ditch and all of these things are sort of this important component to the development of that area, and flooding is obviously concerned. We don't want to continue to just design sites so that stormwater is conveyed to a to a drain to the road, to the connect, we want to start thinking about it differently, so uh, we've added language which says to the maximum extent practicable. This is um, so in the Prague region, when L I D first became a thing, they gave certain towns pile of money to develop regs. And in this language, you'll see in a couple of different places, so if you cannot design for the requirement, and you have to show that you there are reasons on your property why it's not practical. So we're only requiring that they provide zero uh, zero increase for fifty percent of the new area, so if they're not increasing the area, they don't have to do it. Uh, if they're adding thousands per feet, they need to provide something for the treatment of fifty percent of that area. Um, to try to clean the water and do something to it, rather than just piping it and sending it down to someone else, but um. So those, those notes were added um based upon the the feeling that that might become overly burdensome on small sites with bad soils. If they have questions or want to stop, okay. Um, another comment that I think Mike had was pertaining to wanting to make it clear that single family detached dwellings did not become non-conforming in any way with the with, with sort of however the zones um shook out. So we had a note to the allowed use table that said, if you have a single family home established as of the date, the regs are adopted, then it is effectively right, so we're we're um not going to treat it as non-conformity, meaning if they wanted to do something, they'd be needing to go to or go to the various routes, right, but we don't want to encourage people to build detached, single family new. Um, so the single family um attached can still um, be built and some of the others, but again, we want to, we want to move the needle on on this some some ways. Um, so that that uh, language was added to clarify. Um. Other than that, the reg is more or less the same as what you saw last time. Um, so again, it's this, this draft map uh was sort of the culmination of comments, what we talked about, the the other warehouse point planning study, which is the larger document, the larger map that you have, that was from Terry Han. Um, and then some very, very well prepared highlighting that Ruth and Danielle put together, where they scribbled on some maps and we colored them in. Uh, yeah, they went out and looked and we really tried to ground truth this based upon what's there. Um. So that's kind of what you see in front of you now.
What's the next step?
So the next step, I think, would be to, to gosh, I almost, I I feel like I I don't have a better analogy, so I'm going to use a terrible statement, which is, I'm not sure if it's the chicken or the egg. But we have a map and we have the regs, and so neither of them have been sort of established previously, so you could certainly start the process on the regs, if you're comfortable that this is how you'd like to lay out, and you want to have two zones, and then when you feel like that worked pretty well, then you can just start the dial in the map. This can obviously be changed, this would be a a map amendment, we'd have to run that through the public hearing process. Um.
Could they go currently?
They could, yeah, absolutely, you could.
I would think if you're talking about the right.
You don't have to refer the map amendment. Uh, so. Yeah. You certainly could, one of the things that I I can't remember is if we had any feedback from the warehouse point planning study at Terry Han. Where it's sort of like, do you want to be kept informed as to what's happening, if so, give your email. I I feel like. Yeah.
Individuals.
It's right, if we have that, we should follow up and say, this is the next step, you know. I don't, I don't know if that was captured by her, but it would be worth it if we had it. Um. I don't think there was really any, any other major changes. Um, and a lot of this other stuff has been pretty consistent throughout. Um, the other, you know, there's um that that the last section, which is a little bit different than what we have in our current regs, which is for the reduction in standards. Um, so that is um provides some flexibility to you um for certain design criteria, provided those A, B, C, and D have been met, so that recognizes that there's going to be circumstances where this is not going to be a one size fits all, and it may just be that that the reg as intended does not hit the ground correctly. Not necessarily that a hardship exists where a variance is prudent. So if they meet those criteria through the um uh, process here, you can potentially issue uh a reduction in some of those standards. We also have in there to really, because we're trying to make this a bit of a form-based code, in that we're encouraging buildings to look a certain way, but but traditional form-based codes are really complicated. So rather than go so far as to require it to be form-based code, which basically says you build exactly what we want, and we get less involved in the uses, because that's very expensive. Um, we're providing uh, a mechanism where we're going to make the process faster and easier if they do everything that we ask. Um, and so if they, if they want to do something more traditional, they can go with a special permit. But they can perhaps remove that public hearing criteria, if they're going to do a site that meets all the regs that has amenities for pedestrians, that's designed in accordance with, so we're trying to provide incentives without adding the complication of a backend, because it just given the sites and how small they are, you're not likely to see people that have a design team that's, you know, going to fill the corner of the room. So we really don't want to have this really well-written code that's going to just drop sixty pages of requirements on the owners, because they frequently don't work. So that that, you're trying to come up to that line, but not cross it.
I mean, I I've thought in my head, I don't know if you can quantify this or not, but when we kind of started this process, the whole intention was to try to take existing non-conforming use and kind of bring them into conformance. Um, you have any idea how many properties were going to affect, or how, how should I say?
With setbacks being smaller.
Right, so that if anybody existing now wanted to put on in addition to do something different, that they would still be able to do it under the regs without needing to go through the special permit process.
So I don't know all the various regs off the top of my head, just sort of speak constantly about it, but my sense would be that we're not looking to do anything more restricted than what's in place. Right, we're not looking to take a use or a criteria, so the setbacks established are not more restrictive than the underlying zone, I I.
No, I thought we were trying to. Yeah, trying to take properties that currently were existing non-conforming use, now make them conform.
So if a building is at ten feet and and the requirement's thirty five, encourage them to go to thirty five?
No, I'm just saying that if somebody was at ten feet and the reg was thirty five, if they wanted to do any kind of a modification to their property it would force them into the special permit, right?
You you can't, because.
Or they couldn't do anything at all, if they're not conforming in system use.
If they're non-conforming and they, but again, because the way that the setbacks are written I I can't imagine a situation where somebody would be non-conforming now and under the new regulations be more non-conforming.
No, not more, less, that they would now conform.
You're saying, you know, loosen up a little bit. Breathing rooms that would allow for a bump out for, you know.
Right, I mean, because I think the initial conversation was like, you know, somebody needs to add a handicap ramp or do something like that. Um, and currently. Well, so. Where it's already.
I mean, the.
Look at the.
Yeah.
Impervious cover and building coverage percentages, that's really what they.
Yeah, I mean, that's just sticks in my head, when we first started talking about this, the intent was to try to help some of these places that currently are non-conforming use, to try to ease some of the restrictions.
Yeah.
If some of it wanted to do something to their house.
Well, that's just sort of thing, like if we start to increase what we allow for urban coverage and counteract.
Um, so a lot of these residential parcels pretty much fall into uh, it looks like.
I think it was pretty much the core area that that really was the oldest established.
So.
Non-conforming.
So the core area now is B one. So. Yeah, so B one, front yard setback is fifty, side yard setback is fifteen, rear yard setback is thirty. If they fall within the core, their front yard setback goes to established or fifteen, side is ten, rear is fifteen. So so if they're built. Right, yeah, you're reducing that, but to Ruth's point, you open it up much more than that, and you know, it's, we're not, we're never writing regs for the ninety percent, we're writing for the ten, we're writing for the person who comes in and they 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 run their project right through, and they basically are able to pull together something that's not as intended and not necessarily preferable, and so those are the things we're thinking of. Total impervious coverage in the core is set to seventy percent, which is total site building, everything that generally is runoff. Um, and and, you know, that's a, that's a pretty high number. Much more than that, you know, it's it's more or less paid. Top to bottom. Um. So I think.
No, and that that that's that kind of shows with the yard going in the direction of helping these people.
If you have like thoughts in your mind about specific properties that at least just in your recollection feel like they're probably the ones most affected. We could run them through it and just see based upon those sites. Um, and then you can decide, okay, yeah, they don't, they're at ninety five percent impervious, but we we're comfortable at seventy, or we, you know, you may feel differently, but we can try to look at that. And and see how a couple of these things might.
Apologize, I skipped over the Z E O report, missed that. Oh, so excited to get the chickens.
Highlight.
The big things we have going on, um. Down on South Main Street, they have to make fill area down behind one forty, one forty rear.
Yeah.
Um, there's a wetland scientist who's leading the charge of um coming up with a plan, you know, restore or replace. They'll also need to figure out what's in that material that was filled, so um once they get to a point where they have a plan, you don't have to come in for approval for what's in here, if they're going to be regraded, and that's a site with a car speed that they're going to be doing a whole site plan. So we'll see that. I'm scared, not at all, both been driven past. That location, make a defense out of, they're working, uh, it's slow, but they're working, they're making progress.
At least it's getting smaller.
It's still getting smaller, we um are still tracking uh, light but separately figuring. Internally, those.
What's going on here for, uh, under every meeting, every morning?
Yeah, I actually have a question mark next to that, too, we had gone out there, um and met with a soil scientist and the owner, there was an area where they were expanding out and clear trees, um and they had to go in and restore the well, and which they had done, but I think there's more activity going on more recently.
So when they pay their own way, they went too far. New runway.
They cleared.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what's been happening, yeah, we haven't been out there in a while, but.
Just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job, let's get some.
I don't. Danielle's doing very well, they come in, she deals with them, they get close, they're basically. When you brought up them with.
Margaret, right?
Now, the site on one forty. So they just finished up their field sampling, so in the area that got filled back there uh, Russo uh put out a grid, sampling grid. And they um went out and haven't seen any of the results yet, but I just spoke with the L A P Highway of Union today. Uh, that he will have a remediation plan to discuss. Um, third week, week in September is what we're prepared for, it got delayed, I think the rain, then they had some equipment issues. Um. The chemistry's not back yet from the lab, so once that's in, he'll be able to know better. Yeah.
Danielle, she's doing an excellent job. So now under correspondence, we have the Connecticut Federation of Pennington, this is quarterly news.
For your reading pleasure. I know that they put um a little. I know they they put, um, a little plug themselves as for the four hour training requirement, if you wanted to do that. For that, this year, um. I think most everyone on the mission has went to the, or participated in the Connecticut Heart Association. Um, there's another item in your packet that has training, um. Stacy, you know that you need four hours of training, so this is a good opportunity to take some of these.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And just, if you would track for us so that we have the record in the office, in case we get any inquiries. You have folks training records available.
For the ones you registered that's for. You have the record and you're good.
We have the registrations, if you got any confirmation of participation. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Katrina's been calling, um, to get like a more formal confirmation to post logged on and.
We have the two separate programs, we have that.
Three days.
Three Saturdays, and then we get the the eight hour session, uh. Uh. One miracle.
Yeah, it was all day.
Yeah.
Saturday was all night.
Yeah.
It was okay, it was interesting.
Yeah, it was good, it's just, I wanna get credit.
We're like two years credit for that.
You've been over your four hours, right?
That was the eight hours on its own. So that that was covered under the, uh. Then you should print it out the thing. Okay. You have anything else? For us? Okay, if there's anybody on there, you guys have anything they'd like to bring up?
Doing a great job.
Okay, so with that, well, uh, had dinner, wish you a journey. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the table, we have a second.
I have a second.
Second, but Stacy, any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, seven forty two.